All righty. Good morning, everyone. I will call this meeting to our the very last meeting of the year 2024 of the DeKalb County Commissioners. And the day's date is December 3rd, 2024. So off we go. Dottie, what you got this morning?
Well, we kind of planned not to talk too much since we thought we had given part of our time to Larry, and it was going to be the Dottie and Larry Show. But hey, we're just going to go ahead and go on, and you know, when he shows up, great. I gave each of you an announcement regarding the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. Coordinators have a scholarship that they give out every year. And that is the announcement, and on the other side, there is the application. So if any of you, it is right now on the Intranet site for all of our employees to look at, to be able to pass on to any high schoolers, seniors, who are going into something that would assist individuals with disabilities. So if they are going to school to become a nurse, or going into physical therapy, or occupational therapy, or anything like that, then we would entertain their applications. So anyway, please network for that. Actually, last year, we had somebody from DeKalb who won one of the scholarships. And so very proud of that. And I see that Larry is here, so if he would like to go, he's talking now. Anyway, okay.
We don't have him down until 8:45.
Oh, really? Okay, good, good, good. Okay. Hey, recruiting, I'm going to have Morgan talk about that. We're kind of light on recruiting right now, which is great.
Yeah, the only openings we have is the part-time change program facilitator, and then part-time weekend for Sunny Meadows. The prosecutor has a new person starting soon. I haven't been given a start date, but they have everything ready. I think they're just waiting. But I'd like to give Olivia N. I.S. a shout out. She's really helped us with the online onboarding. It saves us a lot of time in person. And pretty much anything we ask her, she can usually do for us. So we're very, very thankful for her, because now people come in and just fill out their perf, and maybe correct any paperwork, and then watch the internal control video. So it saves us in HR a lot of time. And then now IT also has a little onboarding that they do, so we can get people back to their departments quicker.
Yeah, you know, there have been so many things, computer-wise, networking-wise, that I had wanted to do. And, you know, Jack and his department were, I wouldn't say overwhelmed, but you know, they were busy, and they didn't have the staff to be able to really look into some of these things. Not to mention the fact that some technology has even improved since I came onboard. And we're just thrilled that IT and HR have been able to work so well together to get these things rolling. Saves us some time so that we can take care of other things, and yet be available to our new hires, make them feel welcome, get them on their way into their departments. So yeah, kudos, kudos to them for being able to do that. On the other hand, we have, I wouldn't say we're drowning in separation paperwork, but we have quite a few separations, as the end of the year usually does. We have some retirements, and we have some people who are just leaving. And so with that comes the reminders to our department heads about the paperwork that they need to do, in addition to all the paperwork that we need to do, and deleting individuals from our benefit package, and all the extra, the voluntary insurances that they had. And so we've had quite a few. We will have four in the clerk's office alone. So, and then, not even to mention, I would say the transfer of power with newly elected people, and switching positions. And so we're just, you know, busy with a lot of that. We also are working on cleaning out files, of course. You know, you have to flip things over. We are required to keep resumes or applications of individuals who were considered for positions for three years. So we have to go through those, and get those out shredded. We don't have to keep those. So another thing that we talked to our broker week before last, when Lauren came in Apex, and just talked a little bit about how we felt that we were doing with surest, how we were feeling about the standard. I had actually been at the dentist, and had talked to the front office people about who are your favorites to work with when it comes to dental insurance. They gave me a couple options, and Lauren is going to, one of them in particular, she really likes working with. And so since this will be the year that we, you know, our price, you know, we're allowed to take a look at, we've been locked in for the two years, and now we can take a look to see what else is out there. So that was good to know. That, yeah. So then, another thing, we are still a little bit unclear about the security for the Ninth Street Annex. The last, I just wanted to give you guys an update. The last I knew was that the mayor of Auburn was reviewing the contract that you guys had already approved and signed. So we're waiting on that yet.
And the sheriff mentioned that he would be willing to do that?
We have not heard directly, so.
I haven't heard any more about that.
Brady only sent that to the commissioners, Andrew and myself. So he had said that, at the beginning of the year, that they were restructuring some of their security staff, and that one of his security staff, or somebody in his department, will be taking care of the annex.
That's the way I took it.
I took it that way. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the logistics and how that's going to work to make sure it's a long-term situation, as we've wrapped six months up into this contract negotiation with the city of Auburn, and he just pulled the plug on it without having.
I think we need to do more verification on it, maybe.
I'll see if I can get him.
Yeah. At some point in the next week or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, especially since the security staff had a little bit of a change. Tyler Broyles, who had been the head of our courthouse security, is now working for our information systems department, and he will be at the jail. So they made a very nice choice. We have someone who is familiar with the jail and the personnel, and someone who is familiar, but still needs training for our IT systems, and is very willing. And so made that move. So that did kind of shake things up with our security. So that's still, so I think positive, very positive move to be able to keep, you know, a quality employee still employed. So that is, we're working on some other things that we're not at liberty in an open meeting to discuss. And so that's pretty much all that I had on my agenda, since we knew that we'd be sharing our time with Larry. So what do you guys have for us?
Anything, Todd or Mike, for Dottie?
Not here.
Nope.
Awesome.
Okay.
Great.
I think you're all set.
Okay, well, Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. Same back. Good morning, Todd.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
You hear us okay?
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to get my headphones.
Okay. We'll try to pull the mics up a little closer. Larry, what you got? What's going on with the generator?
The, you know, the generator was a very important piece of equipment that needed to be added to the courthouse. It does kind of stand out like sore thumb, though. And I was approached by a donor, or a group of donors, who wish to remain anonymous, who would like to provide the screening that's necessary for the generator to kind of hide it from view. And so Larry has been working with that group, and has drawings for you, and I'm going to let Larry take it from there.
Okay. The first paper that I gave you is an overview of where the generator is sitting. If you look at this old sidewalk, you can see it there, where it's at. Well, there's a bump out down here on this one end. So I come up with the idea, if we took that sidewalk out and brought it out to that bump out, it would give us more room to put that around there. And what this is going to look like is, it's going to mirror the image of the courthouse. And down here at the bottom is how the walls will actually look. On the bottom of the first page there, you got.
The facade will look just like the regular courthouse.
The courthouse is, the bottom part is solid, and then it kind of goes in, and goes in. Anyway, what they're wanting is your blessing on moving forward with this, so they can get it on the schedule to get it for the spring. I think we're probably looking, I'm guessing, probably in May, April, May timeframe. And in order to get it on the schedules, so we can get it done at that time.
Would this have to be approved by the city of Auburn, possibly as another structure?
Um, I would think.
A fence or something?
I would think it would have to be okay, but I.
I would hope they would, you know, they'd prove it quickly, but easily.
It'll have to go through your planning commission for sure.
So there's a lot of things that have to be approved, but we needed to get your blessing on it before we could move it any farther forward.
I assume Susan will have to set up a donation fund where they can place the money, and.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Because it is rather expensive.
Yeah. On the back page is how much it would be. At the very bottom of that, of your last page. In the gray area down there at the very bottom, right there.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Hundred and ten thousand. Oh, yeah.
And the donors are willing to put up the entire amount.
Entire amount. I guess one question, and of course, it wouldn't be included in this. We would pay the additional with the two pads for the extra benches on the south side. Could that work be done the same time the sidewalk is redone? Your contractor and just have him add that on, kind of would pay for the two pads.
I can do that.
But it would be paid for from a separate account.
Yeah, just coordinate that, so it can be done same time.
Yeah.
Rather than have to come back.
Since they're doing the sidewalks, they could do that for us as well.
Yeah, just do it same time.
And just to let you know, I would be overseeing this to make sure it's done to our standards.
Todd is not probably able to see this.
Certainly a generous offer, I would say.
Yeah, I was very tickled. I think it would make it look very nice over there on that side.
Todd, just a little bit of explanation. They're going to move that sidewalk a little bit, take out the old sidewalk, obviously.
Yes.
And put new sidewalk a little bit to the south, as it goes east and west, and a little bit out farther on that curve, comes around the generator, and go a little bit more southeast, and then reconnect to the existing sidewalk on going north on the east side.
I text you a picture.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, I like it.
And the thing of it is, it's not going to change, I mean, the sidewalk is going to change, but probably most people, after it gets grass and everything, you won't even notice it change. It's still going to have the curve, it's going to look just, I didn't want to do something different. I wanted it to look like it does without changing it.
Totally, yeah.
And if you look at it, believe it or not, this sidewalk goes in towards the courthouse from the first point to the.
I see that.
It goes in.
It actually goes in.
Yeah.
Going east to west, west to east. Okay, motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the donation for the screening and sidewalk changes for the generator.
I'll second.
Right, motion second on the floor. Are there any additional comments?
Just a reminder, I have to roll call every vote.
That's right.
And I was just going to.
Roll call.
Just to clarify, is this a motion to accept the donation, and also a motion to do the project, or just a motion to accept the donation and then get final plans later? Or I was just wanting to clarify for the record.
Let me modify the motion to accept the donation and proceed with the project.
Okay.
Okay. Another second.
I'll second that also.
Okay. Roll call.
All right, Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And I will keep you guys updated about what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else while I'm here?
I don't believe so. Anything, Mike or Todd, for Larry?
Yep.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I was going to say that, both of you guys, been a pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on and do payroll.
I'll move to approve payroll.
And I'll second.
Motion second to approve payroll, comments? Roll call.
Todd? Yes or no?
Would you say, yeah?
Todd, Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Claims? A chance to check over the claims? Motion?
Make the motion to approve the claims?
I'll second.
Motion second to approve claims, comments? All those in favor saying five percent, aye?
Aye.
Sorry.
That's right. Todd?
Yeah?
Mike?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you.
He's seeing you more, which is giving me every time.
It's all good.
All right, the minutes.
I was so excited when I was preparing these minutes. Todd?
I rather. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve minutes, comments? Roll call.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Okay, you want to do that SRO agreement real quick?
Um, yes. This is the SRO agreement with DeKalb Central that the sheriff brought a few months ago, actually. And I had requested there be some verbiage changes to clarify the agreement. And so it went back to DeKalb Central. They did their approval, and so now it's coming back to us for us to do our official approval. And this will be for the school year 2024 and '25, and '25 and '26.
Two years.
Yep.
Okay. I see the sheriff has signed it also.
Yes. Yep, and we worked with Andrew, and everything's good to go.
Good to go. Motion to approve the SRO agreement with DeKalb Central?
I'll make a motion. Salute.
I'll second.
Motion is, every motion is a second, comments? All those in.
Todd?
Roll call.
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes. Annual elected official bond acceptance and approval.
So each year, each year, the elected officials, and they would be the clerk, coroner, auditor, treasurer, recorder, sheriff, and then we have a blanket bond for all county employees. They are renewed each December, and the ones that I listed are the ones that the commissioners have to approve and sign for, and then we get them recorded. So the blanket bond is $5,000 for each employee. The clerk's bond's $120,000, coroner's $15,000, auditor is $30,000, treasurer's $300,000, the recorder's $15,000, and the sheriff is $30,000. So I just need you guys to move to approve those, and then we'll all sign, and then we'll get them recorded.
Make a motion yet?
No.
Then I will make a motion.
Thank you.
That we approve and sign the elected official bonds.
Have a second, Todd, on the bonds?
Yes, I will second the bond, yes.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor, additional comments? All those in favor, signify.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Oh, I guess so. Old habits hard to break.
Right.
Todd, you got me all messed up.
It is all Todd's fault.
It's Todd's fault.
Completely.
Pass the buck. Signature, I know these.
Is there what?
No signature.
At the bottom, the very bottom.
Just the bottom, I can.
Yeah, they're written in there.
Okay, let's jump over to the next agenda item. Chance, what you got for us today?
Jase?
A couple of properties that need to be looked at. Had complaints on them. The one 5046 County Road 45, I went by and took pictures yesterday, and it looks, they are cleaning it up. So I am not going to do anything with that one today. Thirty-five.
They're compliant as of now?
Yes, yes. The other one I have is 3593 County Road 427. Do you have pictures of? And I did take pictures yesterday. They haven't did anything.
Mr. Albright's in the audience.
Okay. It's fine.
What'd you say?
It looks like you've went through all the procedures as far as notifications.
Correct.
And so forth.
Correct.
I guess so, some, Mr. Albright, you have a.
He's sitting right there.
Comments?
Is that on? Thanks.
Also. Okay.
Can you state your name?
Frank Albright.
Frank? And your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
1489 West 700 South, Ash Street, 46705.
Which property is this?
I'm sorry?
This one is 3593 County Road 427.
Okay, so do you live at this property?
I'm sorry?
Do you live at this property?
He can barely hear you guys. I live in Ash, 1489 West, 700 South, at Ash.
Okay. So who lives at this property?
No one.
Okay.
It's a business.
That's, that's your Dinks woodworking shop.
I have 22 acres there. Most of it is done for agriculture and we farm it. And then we have a little less than four acres that's done for business. We fabricate steel, we store, I'm in the construction business. I actually built that, the city office building over there in 1978. Dean Cruz still owes me $68,000. I don't know when I might get that, but I'm not depending on it. Anyway, I'm in the construction business. We've been very, very busy. I had, I built a 52,000 square foot building in Fort Wayne, where they build, they make the license plate, and do the, they do all of the paperwork for like your titles and your registration. And we had a real deadline that's kept us really, really busy. We have cleaned up a lot of the stuff that you've complained about. We have cleaned up a lot of the stuff that you've complained about. I've owned that property for over 20 years. I never had any complaints until that trail, the walking path or bike path, that has people come down there and they don't like what they see. Some of it, I admit, we had some steel out near the road that we've cleaned up. There's been complaints about my crane, but we use that crane right there. We unload and unload steel, and I've put the boom down, but I need that crane in that location. We bring trucks in, we unload steel, we take it into the building, we cut it, we weld it, and we take it and load it back with that same crane and haul it to wherever the job is that we're going to use it. There's a motor home that I sold to a guy five years ago, and I've told him and told him he has to get it out of there. And I told him Friday that if he didn't have it out within a week, I would move it myself, and I will. I don't know what else I can tell you. That crane is not dangerous. Somebody, somewhere, told me that someone had said it was dangerous. We use it, you know? I operated it Saturday. Saturday, some of the steel that I have stored there on a trailer, and we hauled it to Fort Wayne, and we're building a 97,000 square foot building there that we have to have done real soon. I only have 14 employees, and we... I've told two of them that this next week... Well, actually, they started last week cleaning up and hauling stuff away that was unsightly. The garbage, we unfortunately are in a location that people find convenient to dump stuff. They haul couches and garbage and stuff out, and we don't remove it immediately, but it's a constant problem. We also have had people come out, and one guy came there with a wrecker and was loading up some of my equipment. I called the sheriff, and they took him. I don't know what became of him, but he had my machinery. I have farm machinery there also that we use from time to time. I don't know what else I can tell you, except that we... If you'd want to go out there with me and point out anything that you think is unacceptable, I'll talk to you about it, because some of it is stuff that we use.
Jase, what did you... What did you ask Frank to clean up? And the... Because this is the... This will be the third letter you've sent him.
Mm-hmm.
Have you talked to Frank at all?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Nope.
I never saw you before.
Nope.
Right, but the letters would have...
He hasn't tried to get ahold of me here.
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
But what have you asked him in the letters to clean up specifically? Because in these letters, she's not saying blanketly, "The property's dirty, you need to clean it up." She's giving specific... Sorry, he's giving specific items that need to get cleaned up. So it's not like this is the first time Frank is hearing this. If this is the third letter that Frank has gotten, so that's just... I'm wanting to preface the board that this is, or the commissioners, this is not just the first time he's hearing this, and there are specific items that Jase has asked.
Excuse me. It is... I haven't had one letter. Now, we had a problem, and we still have a problem. Our mail is not going to my home. I just found out probably a month ago. My former bookkeeper worked for Jeremy Bowers, and the mail was going to her place. Well, probably six months ago, she and Jeremy had some kind of a...
I'm going to look underneath his podium. Jody?
Okay. Anyway, I had a stack of mail that high over in Jeremy Bowers' office, and he called me and said, "You know, your mail is here." So I went and got it, and I just took it to my other... My new bookkeeper, and I never looked at it. I just had a whole batch of stuff, and I've had another batch sent that I don't look at it. I take it to... Am I doing something wrong?
No.
Okay.
These were also posted on your door. These were also posted on your door, so when you went into your business, you should have seen the notes that were left.
Well, it depend on which door. I don't go there every day, you know? And I don't go in the front door ever. There's a side door.
But they're very noticeable on there.
I'm sorry?
They're very noticeable on your door.
Yeah.
Driving in, you should be able to see them.
One of my neighbors told me he saw it.
So you knew they were there?
I'm sorry?
So you knew they were there?
Yeah, he called me, and his brother sent me a text yesterday that I haven't read. I had a stroke in February, and I have a hard time reading without glasses, and I'm not used to wearing glasses. I lived nine... Almost 90 years without any eye problems at all, and now I have major eye problems.
But if you guys look on the pictures, like 11-6, there's a van there. There's trailers. I don't believe they're being used because...
We use all those trailers.
They're all plated.
Or what?
They're all plated.
No, 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 no. But we use them. We store stuff in them, and there's, you know... Most of, I would say... I don't know what you're talking about, frankly, but there's two semi-box trailers that we use to store material. I don't know. You know, most of that's agriculture. I don't know why.
Well, you have another camper sitting on your property too, back here.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have trucks.
Is that still there? That's something else that somebody backed in there and parked. I'd give it to you if you wanted.
Yeah, it's still there. But you have little trailers too sitting there.
We have a lot of trailers. We use a lot of trailers. We're in the construction business.
Couple of questions. Chris, the use of the property based on the zoning, as Frank is using it for his construction business, is proper use?
Luckily for me, it's an Auburn ETJ.
Okay.
So it'd be considered a legal non-conforming, because it's been there for, I'm assuming...
Yeah, long before.
A longer, long time. Right, right. So for that, it'd be considered a legal non-conforming, even if it was in our jurisdiction. But I think maybe what I would probably suggest is Jase and Frank get together and actually talk out on the property, and Jase lets him know what needs to get cleaned up and what doesn't, and give him a timeframe. That way, we're just not sitting here having a back and forth, because I don't think it's going to...
That was going to be my next question.
Okay.
Frank, are you willing to meet Jase?
Sure.
On the property? Go through and make a specific list?
Yeah.
Of what needs to be done?
We can have an appointment, a time that would be there, because I'm not there.
Right.
Like I said, I'm building a 97,000 square foot building in Fort Wayne.
Well, you're both here this morning, Frank.
Yep.
So if you can get together and...
I never saw this.
Set up a time.
I don't know his name even.
Jase.
You know mine.
Jase.
What?
Jase, with a J, yeah.
How do you spell it?
J-H-A-C-E.
J-H-A-C-E?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. J-H-A-C-E.
Well, if the two of you can get together...
Okay.
Get your information exchanged.
Yeah. We'll go over all that.
What?
We'll go over all that.
Okay.
Yeah, set up a time, Frank. Me, him out there, and if you can make a list of what needs to be done and take care of it.
It's fine.
Is that reasonable?
I think that's reasonable. Todd, what do you think?
Yeah, I think those two get together, work it out, get the list, and check off the boxes.
I think a key part of that is going to be what is allowed under the ordinances. I'm just saying, a key part of this is going to be figuring out what's allowed for a business to have outside under the ordinances and what isn't. So you'll have to work that out, I guess.
Do you have any idea of where the line is that separate? Like I said, there's a little less than four acres that's zoned for business, and the rest is agriculture. I think that agriculture's allowed more leeway than business. Is that correct?
I think we've got access to that.
I'm sorry?
We've got access to that information. Jase can bring that out, but if you guys could get that worked out within the next week, maybe, to get together, or at least after the holidays right away.
Want to tell me when you'd want to do it?
Yeah.
You guys can meet outside. You guys can talk out in the hallway.
Okay, do the commissioners want to give a timeframe? So how long after Jase meets with him that there needs to be something done? Or you just...
I think if Jase checks on his property once a week after this meeting and come back to us with a progress report each week.
We're making progress.
Or every two weeks. Let's go every two weeks, because we meet every two weeks. Yeah, come back to us every two weeks and with a progress report. How does that sound?
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Albright. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming in.
Oh, thanks for being here.
Thanks, Jase.
Okay. Let's jump over into this SRI agreement. What is certificate sale?
Yes, so every year, we hold a normal tax sale, and so we have that agreement. We haven't had a certificate sale or a commissioner's sale that's one of the same since 2021's tax sale. So we're going to hold one this year on the unsold parcels that are remaining from the most recent 2024 tax sale. That will be held on March 11th, 2025. It will be online. So we have the agreement addendum, so we have to add on the services for the certificate sale. That's the first thing to approve. And then the next thing is the Resolution 2024-R-15 that actually establishes the intent to hold the commissioner's sale.
Okay. Any problems with it, Andrew, that you could see?
I didn't necessarily look in great detail at that. I just...
It's pretty much a...
It's probably a standard thing that has been done before.
Yeah.
As long as it follows that, it should be okay.
There's a 15% charge fee to do that sale.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion to approve the SRI sale?
I'll move to...
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll make the motion to approve the SRI agreement for this certificate sale.
And I will second.
Heavy motion and second on the floor. Additional comments? Real call.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. And we might as well just clean up the list. 2024-R-15, Resolution to conduct certificate... Certificate sale. What you got, Susan?
I just need a motion from you guys, and then it's there for you to sign. Approving the Resolution 2024-R-15.
I'll make that motion to approve Resolution 2024-R-15 relating to holding the conducting the certificate sale.
I will second.
Heavy motion and a second on the floor. Additional comments? Okay, real call.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Okay. Yes? I think we are.
All right. I've got two text amendment applications that went before the Plan Commission a while ago. It was back in November 20th. The first one is revisions to home-based businesses. There's kind of a generic or overall term for people that have businesses at their properties. There's three levels, I guess, if you will, of home-based businesses. There's a home occupation, a home workshop, and a home enterprise. They kind of get more intense as you go down. This is all currently in the UDO, and I guess I should hand these out. I did print off enough for two of you to have. I guess, Andrew, you...
We don't.
I don't know if you gave them the underlined, highlighted version or just the clean copy? Probably just the clean copy, I would assume. Anyway, what I'm passing out to you all is the edited version of what we plan to keep, what we plan to remove, and what we plan to add to this part of the UDO. Plan to keep the overall definition of a home-based business, removing the three definitions for home occupation, home workshop, and home enterprise, basically making sure that those items that are in those three levels of a home-based business are within the development standards of a home-based business, having to refer to the standards in one section and then potentially have a definition that outlines an additional standard just doesn't make sense. The standard should be within the standards and not within the definition. So removing those out of the definitions. For home occupation, a lot of things just needed to kind of be cleaned up and help make more sense out of what is in here. One thing that we did add, the Plan Commission did add, was uses that shall never qualify as a home-based business. Those uses being garbage and recycling collectors, junk yards, or other junk accumulation activities, any work where vehicles do not have current title, plate, and registration, any activities that involve bodywork or painting, and any use that does not fit within the standards below. So a lot of this was kind of up to interpretation of the zoning administrator, which isn't entirely bad, but some people can say, "Well, I'm just, you know, collecting trash and picking it up once a week, and then I'm getting rid of it." Well, as we know with our code enforcement, that's not always how things go. People accumulate a lot of things and claim it as a business, and then we don't want that as a standard within our UDO. For the home occupation, we don't necessarily have a permit fee for a home occupation, but we do want to have it on record, so we do have a permit for that. The home occupation, one thing that we removed and added was the home occupation shall be operated by the resident of the property and no more than one onsite employee. So for instance, if I would have a small... So, for instance, if, if I would have a, um, a small sewing shop or, or, or something like that, I could have another employee, um, that doesn't reside in the home. Um, minimum floor, I'll just go through all this. The minimum floor area for a home-based business shall not exceed 500 square feet. Uh, you can't change the character of the, of the, of the property, so you couldn't take a, a 500-square-foot house, if you would have one, or, or a thousand-square-foot house, uh, you know, and make it look like a commercial business. Um, the location of the home-based business shall be with entirely within the structure, primary structure, or within an accessory structure not to exceed the maximum floor area. So, if you wanted to have it in a, you know, a detached garage or, or something like that, you could. Uh, there's no outdoor storage of any materials unless it's screened by a privacy fence. Um, there's no advertising, uh, signs or anything that, that has an external indication that this is a business, except for what's allowed in the sign section, which is, is 10 square feet. The nuisance can't create any offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, that sort of thing. Um, sale of products, articles sold or offered for sale shall be limited to those assembled onsite. Um, hours of operation, we just have it, we don't have any set hours, but shouldn't interfere with the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties. Um, two parking spaces required. Here's a signage. Um, adding in, we have had people come in and ask if they could have a sign for, you know, a small home-based business, and it wasn't permitted before. Um, I don't think it, it diminishes the property's value at all, especially if it's only a six-square-foot sign on the wall, or even a, a ground sign not to exceed 10 square feet. Um, it can't be illuminated at all, and it just, you know, helps with, with people needing to get to the property, um, but also would help us understand where, where the property is located. Um, and then the home occupation, uh, includes artist studios, sewing and tailoring, professional offices. So, if, you know, you have a, a, a one-staff dentist, podiatrist, um, or a lawyer, engineer, so there's professional offices, um, teaching with musical instruction and barbering or hairdressing. And then I think on there it says, "Other home-based businesses deemed appropriate by the zoning administrator." So, if there's, you know, someone that comes in and has some sort of business that's not really listed there, it'd be up to the zoning administrator to determine if that would be considered a home occupation. Any questions on that? That's kind of the, the, the higher of, of all. We get more, um, in-depth with the home workshop and home, home enterprise. They get more intense as you go. Uh, for home workshop, really, the, the approval process is all, all the same. Um, we didn't change anything there. We do require them to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception approval. Um, it helps with, uh, the zoning administrator determining what would be considered a home workshop, um, but also if there's anything that they want more of. So, if they're, you know, not at a maximum floor area of 1,000 square feet, but 1,200 or 1,500, um, they can ask the, the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance. Um, sometimes they, they wanna have outdoor storage of, of, of materials, and maybe a privacy fence wouldn't be tall enough. In our UDO, a privacy fence can only be six feet. They could request a privacy fence for eight feet, or a privacy fence with additional buffering. The Board of Zoning Appeals can add more standards, um, to what they would, to, to what they would request. On the residency, we, we allow for the resident to be, uh, the owner, or the home workshop be operated by the resident, and then no more than three onsite employees. Um, not to exceed, we removed 500 and took it up to 1,000 square feet. Again, no external character, you know, change of, of the aesthetic of the property. Uh, and the home workshop should be conducted entirely within the primary structure or the accessory structure, not to exceed the maximum floor area. Uh, there should be no outdoor storage of materials unless it's screened by a privacy fence. Um, parking spaces are required for the business, one space for each employee. Uh, signage, uh, wall signs were already allowed for there, um, and then we allowed an addition, or proposing to allow an additional ground sign, um, not to exceed 15 square feet and six feet in height. And then there weren't types of home workshops, so we added that as well, um, giving a, giving the zoning administrator kind of an idea of what, what a home workshop should allow. So, small engine and appliance repair, uh, woodworking or carpentry, plumbing, electrical, or other trade work. And that would be for, you know, people, plumbers or electricians that would have a home base, and then obviously go out, um, onto other people's properties and, and do the work. Uh, pet boarding or pet breeding for less than five animals, and other businesses previously listed, um, or deemed appropriate by the zoning administrator. And then the last one for the home enterprise, um, this also receives approval by special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, must be occupied by the resident of the property, and no more than five onsite employees. Uh, maximum floor area is 1,500 square feet for a home enterprise. Um, again, no outdoor storage or display unless screened by a privacy fence. Uh, for signage, um, ground sign, we allowed 15-square-foot sign and six feet in height. Uh, we removed that it should be landscaped with evergreen plant materials. Again, nobody ever goes out there and checks to make sure that there's shrubs surrounding the, the, the sign. So, you know, make, why make it a requirement? Um, and then the types of home enterprises, um, vehicle repair and maintenance, but not to include bodywork and painting, uh, pet boarding or pet breeding for less than 10 animals, um, a butcher, or bakery, or small restaurant, or other home-based businesses previously listed. Um, so it just kind of cleans up the language. It's something that, that I've seen more and more, especially, um, people becoming their, their, their own entrepreneurs. That's not really the word I want to say, becoming entrepreneurs, and, um, you know, having, having businesses on their properties. One thing that we're gonna need to look at, I'm kind of getting in the weeds here, but is, um, how do we promote people to go from a home enterprise, or home workshop, or home occupation, and then move it to their, to an actual place in the county that would be appropriate? There aren't many places, probably very limited places in DeKalb County, that we have sites available for, um, people to purchase or go to that isn't within, you know, a residential neighborhood, if you will, um, for people to have, have businesses. I mean, it's obviously, you know, if, 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 if they get so large that they need to move, um, they usually will need to go to a use variance through the BZA or a rezone, which isn't a bad idea. But, um, you know, we have a lot of people that are doing these home-based businesses. Um, I think we had three or four last year through the BZA, which is a lot, um, to, uh, to, to go before the board. But these revisions to the standards will help us, uh, regulate these a little bit more, and also give a little bit, little bit more leeway, um, with, with a home-based business, so. And the Plan Commission did give a unanimous favorable recommendation on November 20th.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Uh, comments, questions, Chris? Commissioners?
All right.
Anything, Todd?
No.
As the attorney for the Plan Commission, uh, I was a part of that process, I know, at least. But I just wanted to say that for the record, so I, I'm fine with it as well, and I've reviewed it.
Good to, uh, clean up that, that language whenever we have opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. I will entertain a motion.
And this one, I know we have two. So, this one is the home-based one. So, it's the Resolution 2024 dash R dash 12, UDO dash 96, that we're approving at this time.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I will, uh, momentarily approve, uh, Form 2024 dash R dash 12, uh, relating to home-based businesses.
I will second.
Any motion and a second? Are there any additional comments? Okay, roll call.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
You.
That all we need on that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
All right, the next one I got for you is for short-term rentals or properties considered Airbnbs or VRBOs, um, people that have homes or rooms that they rent out, um, that aren't considered hotels or motels that you see in the typical sense. I'm sure we've all seen them. Um, Indiana Code changed, I think it was back in 2020 or 2021, that put regulations on how communities can zone these properties.
Basically, it means communities cannot zone them out of existence.
Correct, correct.
Quite a bit of limitation on it.
Right.
You can put some similar language with other structures, and that's about it.
Yeah, yeah. So, we, we added basically the language that we took from Indiana Code, didn't add any standards that were more, uh, stringent than, than what Indiana Code allows. Um, but what it does is it helps us be able to regulate short-term rentals or Airbnbs, VRBOs, um, with our ordinance. We can allow and require permit fees, which is what Indiana Code requires. Um, so we're just kind of mimicking what, what Indiana Code has. Everything that Susan gave you in your packet is all new to the UDO, so they're, um, just so you're aware. Um, short-term rentals, uh, we defined, basically it's the same definitions that are in Indiana Code, um, that IC 36 dash 1 dash 24. Um, the rental of a single-family home, a dwelling unit or bedroom in a single-family home, um, a dwelling unit or bedroom in a two-family or a multifamily, or in a condominium, um, or timeshare for less than 30 days at a time through a short-term rental platform. So, that'd be like the Airbnb or, or VRBO, or whatever else might be out there. Um, it included, uh, whereas allowed accessory structures, um, including a guest house or other living quarters. We don't allow people to put a second residence on a property with, or if there's already a, an existing single-family home, so this wouldn't apply. But if the UDO would ever change that we allow somebody to have a separate living quarters in a, in a, in a accessory structure, or, uh, I'm thinking if somebody has a, a pool house or something like that, that they wanna then rent out later, um, we can allow that. But, um, we currently don't have anything that allows, allows that portion right now. Um, this doesn't allow the property to be used for any non-residential, so they couldn't have an Airbnb that then becomes a, uh, bakery or, or something like that. Um, and doesn't include bed and breakfast facility, hotel, motel, um, that we have to find in our UDO. Um, the short-term rental owner occupied, so there's two separate, um, short-term rentals. There's an owner occupied one where the, it's the owner's primary residence, and they're offering it, um, to the public as a short-term rental. So, if you have a, you know, a basement bedroom that you wanna rent out as a short-term rental, you can. And then short-term rental, non-owner occupied, so that's if somebody would build a new single-family house and rent out the entire structure, um, for a short-term rental. And then we're proposing to add short-term rental owner occupied and short-term rental not owner occupied as a permitted use in our A1 and our A2. Those are our two agricultural districts. Um, the RE, R1, R2, R3, our residential districts, and our M1, M2, and MP. And so, those are our multifamily or mobile home park, um, districts. Now, this wouldn't mean that if a mobile home park doesn't allow rentals, for instance, if a mobile home park doesn't allow you to rent out the mobile home that you're, you own, even if you own it seasonally or something like that, um, it doesn't give them the right to trump our, or, sorry, it doesn't give us the right to trump their, their additional HOAs, so, um, just so everyone's aware. Uh, the development standards that would be in Article 5, um, pretty minimal standards that don't go above what, um, the Indiana Code allows, but we can require a permit, um, that it's, they're renewed yearly, but the fee cannot be renewed, or, sorry, the fee cannot be paid yearly. So, if I own a single-family house, I, I, or a Airbnb, if I, uh, get a permit on January 1st and pay the $150, I have to renew it on January 1st every year, but I don't have to pay that fee every year. Indiana Code defined that, that the, that the fee is, um, a one-time fee. Um, number of rentals, no more than one short-term rental shall be on a property. Um, so, for instance, if you have, if you would happen to, which our county doesn't allow it, but if you would happen to have multiple single-family homes on one property, you can only rent out one of those. Uh, setbacks, they shall meet the setbacks for a primary structure. Uh, property and the signage, um, signage of no more than 20 square feet. I don't believe there was signage in the, in this Indiana Code, but one thing that I've received complaints on, uh, through one or two people, is that they, they, they live next door to one of these, and whether it's the driveways are close together, but, um, they happen to drive into their property, realize it wasn't the short-term rental, after they walk in the door and see that it's a mom and daughter sitting there. Um, and they had to, you know, get told that it was next door, so, um, having signage there would help. And then requiring the address sign to be posted per our county ordinances. So, um, again, nothing more than what is allowed in Indiana Code. There's enforcement regulations in here, in Indiana Code, that we didn't put in the development standards. Um, and basically, Andrew can speak to this too, but it basically just, we would, we would refer to Indiana Code for any enforcement that we would need to, um, to do if, if we would have to. That's some pretty basic language, just to, again, mirror what Indiana Code, um, put into law back in 2020 or 2021.
Okay. Comments or questions for Chris? Mike or Todd? What do you got for numbers on this, Susan?
All right, it'll be Resolution 2024 dash R dash 13, UDO dash 97.
Motion to approve?
What was that, uh, resolution again?
2024 dash R dash 13, UDO dash 97.
Okay. And make a motion to approve 2024 R dash 13, UDO, was it 97?
Yes.
Um, yeah, let me make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Any motion and a second on the floor? Any additional comments? Roll call.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
If I have, like, five minutes.
No. Just joking.
I see it on the agenda. I have a half hour, technically. And you've got time.
I have stuff to fill in.
I know. No, I just wanted to give you a quick little update of our office. We are about 15 to 20% over permits, exceeding what we've done in our maximum years, which is great. Um, and we've done more text amendments this year than we have done in the past with the Plan Commission, which I think speaks to the Plan Commission wanting to meet and discuss. Typically, you know, if you don't have anything on the agenda, you don't, anyone bringing something forward, um, to the Plan Commission, we, we typically didn't have a meeting. But, um, this year, you know, the Plan Commission wanted to, to, to meet when they could. Um, there were times when, like, these text amendments, I think we went over them, Bill, back in June or July of this year, and finally brought them back forward in, in November. Um, but we've been, we've been really busy, um, this year, and, and I wanted to thank the Plan Commission, and thank Andrew and Bill for, um, helping the Plan Commission, uh, helping guide us in, in, in the right direction this year. We're gonna be busy with that comprehensive plan coming up in 2025 and 2026. Um, so I know Mike and Todd, you're, you're exiting from being a commissioner, um, but hope that you'd still be involved in, um, the, the comprehensive plan rewrite. It's gonna be really important for DeKalb County, I think, um, especially over the next, you know, 20... for DeKalb County, I think, especially over the next, you know, twenty, twenty or thirty years and creating that vision for DeKalb County. Something that, as we've been part of this for four years with you guys and longer with Bill, something that the Plan Commission, I think, has struggled with a little bit is, is the current comprehensive plan just doesn't really give a vision for what DeKalb County wants or should be. And so the new comprehensive plan rewrite will really, really, really help guide decisions on rezones, on text amendments, on uses that may be controversial, as we've all dealt with over the past couple of years. But I want to thank Mike and Todd as well for working with the Plan Commission and me over the last four years. It's been a pleasure getting to know you guys and working with you as well. So Todd, if you can open those blinds though, so I can see the sun and the warmth and the beach and all that, I'd be much happier. It's sunny here but cold. But thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Bill will work with you more. So thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Much appreciated. Yes, sir.
Pleasure working with you too, Chris.
Thanks, Todd. Still waiting on that invitation.
You're a handful.
Yeah, you're a little bit tired.
I don't know. I'm afraid you'll put pictures in the airplane or something.
Picture of you sleeping.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Any more miscellaneous, Susan?
I do. The, I had handed out to everyone late last night, I put together our ARPA funds, what we did with them, where they went, all the projects that were covered. And then in the box on the right-hand side, there are a few projects that will, were planned, aren't quite finished, but will be funded by other funds because we have spent, we've done, I've done some claim adjustments so that we spend all of our ARPA dollars and we can close that out at twelve thirty one of twenty four. So I provided that to everybody and I'll email it to you, Todd. And I just, I don't know if anybody has any questions or wants to know anything further on the ARPA money. I can go through, if you want me to go through, I can go through what all we've done.
I don't think we need to do that. I've went down through it. Seems fine and understandable.
We did a lot.
We did a lot.
A lot.
Lot of projects, lot of things brought up. Todd, Mike, anything on that? Comments?
Nope.
Okay.
We're, we're secure on our, we're sure that we've appropriated the money correctly and where we don't have to give it back, right? In other words, we've.
Correct. It's all spent.
We, we, which is for, whether we move it to a different projects up to us, but we're good, right?
Yes, because all of ours, because it was under the ten million, was lost revenue, so it could be spent on any of our needs.
Yep.
So yes, and I, you'll see it when I send it. There are a few things left at the jail and maybe a few things that IT might need. Those can comfortably be funded by County General, Public Safety Lit for the jail and some in cum cap development. And then I have it broken down where Bridge seventeen will be paid for. A lot of the claim adjustments are in your guys' lighted fund, so that it's all in one fund. And then I'll just remind you guys each year when we budget that, we need to budget that bridge money in the lighted so that we can do that project when it comes forward. So.
Okay. Anything else, Susan?
Nope.
I've got one item, the jail water softener. I'm waiting on a quote from Metter to rebuild that. He says it's going to be considerably less than replacing it. It doesn't make sense to replace it when we can rebuild the old one. It's a lot. I was supposed to get that today. Haven't got it yet. If I get it later on, I'll let everybody know.
I had checked with the sheriff Friday afternoon to find out if he had any more information, and at that time, Metter didn't show up when he was supposed to, so he didn't have anything further.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure if you'll get it, but.
Did you all get an email from Jim, from me about Jim Metter? He had called Thursday and I sent an email to the, all three of you. Okay.
Right, right.
Just saying he wanted to talk to one of you about.
Yeah, I did, I did call him.
I just didn't know if that was.
He was supposed to get down there and get the, whether it was a newer or a newer valve, so he could get the right parts and the code on there, finish the quote. So anyway, waiting here on that. That's all I had. The ten forty five business impression signature and agreement. Can we jump into that and do that?
I'm not even sure why it's on there, to be honest. I didn't make that appointment. It's, you already approved it last week. It's literally, I don't have it. He brings the paper for you to sign.
Okay.
So I don't really even know why that's there.
Because I thought we had approved it and everything.
You did.
Yeah. Okay, so kind of check that off for now anyway. Anything else, anyone, before we go to break? How about you, Andrew? Anything?
Just to say, we have the hearing coming up on Friday.
The public hearing.
The public hearing on Friday. I guess Mike and Todd won't be there, but, and Kellen and Jim will be. Donald Stuckey will be the attorney representing the commissioners at that hearing. And Donald Stuckey's done a lot of meetings and I know he's done a lot of administrative hearings for the school, et cetera, so he'll be very good at doing that, of course. And other than that, I know I've been talking with Susan about how we set it up. I don't know when you get sworn in. Kellen and Jim would need to be sworn in.
Is it tomorrow? Yeah.
Okay.
It is.
All right.
And just a reminder, first thing, we will need to reorganize commissioners before we get right into that public hearing.
Yep.
Yep. Just so that everything is legal with the new commissioners and how it's all set up to run the meeting. Okay.
Okay. All right, I guess I'll open it up to comments from the public. Anybody have anything they want to say? I know you did, Andrew. You always got something to say.
I've always got something to say. I actually, it is the last, I just wanted to thank all of you, literally all of you. Everybody, I've been here going through most of these for years. I've learned a lot from you guys. I know Mike, who I've not always gotten, you know, C9I, but you're a hard worker, man, and you are extremely knowledgeable. So I wanted to thank everybody. Todd, I know, I know you're there. I appreciate you. I thank you for everything. So Bill, like I said, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Good morning.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, let's just take a break. And we'll have Ben in after the break, and then we'll be done.
Sounds good.
Good morning, guys.
Put my mic on, that'll help, won't it?
Hello, Todd?
Morning, Ben.
So I got bid results here, I just handed you guys all a copy of that. Those are all in there. This year, I talked to Andrew and there was some, I don't feel, there's some, not all the documents were submitted with item number eight for professional services.
It just kind of made sense to rebid that as the best solution to get everything that the county needs going forward.
Right. So after speaking with Andrew, we're going to, we can accept all bids as presented and with exclusion of item eight, and we will, I got a bid doc for notice to bidders, we'll rebid item number eight. So you guys got a copy there, so if you guys, I'm good with accepting all bids.
Except number eight.
Except number five, except number eight.
Well, based on Ben's recommendation, I'll move that we accept all bids with exception of item number eight, and item number eight to be rebid.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Additional comments? Roll call.
Um, Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
What else you got, Ben?
Okay, so I have the notice to bidders here for item number eight. This is for the 2025 professional services. Bids will go out, will be advertised, bids will be received January 21st, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. Bids open at 10:30 for the service period, February 3rd, 2025 to January 15th, 2026. And this is for all three commissioners to sign. I have two copies, that way Susan can keep one and then I can take the other one back. So I've got the specifications, I did send this off to Andrew and received his approval on the notice to bidders.
Any motion on that?
We probably should.
Yeah. Yes.
Motion?
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll make a motion that we sign authorizing notice to bidders for professional services to be rebid.
Second.
A motion and a second, any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, or no.
Todd?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Oh, I did it backwards, Mike.
Mike?
I'm trying to catch up here. Yep, Mike, yeah, he did it.
Okay, how many yess? It's perfectly clear, huh?
We're good.
So those both are the same, Bill, if you just sign both of them and then give to Susan, she's signing for Todd, or we'll leave that blank, it's up to you guys. Perfect, thank you. I just got a couple FYIs for you guys then. I have been working on the materials for the covered bridge roof, re-roof project. I got a spec and information of that sent off to the DNR, did that before Christmas. I have not received any information back. So once I receive that back, I'll know which direction we go, whether they accept that material, or if we got to go a different route. But I just want to let you know I am proceeding with that and hopefully get approval on what I submitted, and then we can get a bid spec put together and get that out the bed here soon, hopefully.
Okay, sounds good.
The last thing I got, just FYI, I'm finishing up getting the CCMG bid docs ready. I'm hoping to send that out to bid after the first of the year. You guys gave me approval to do that back in the end of November, so hopefully that will go out first of January, is what I'm hoping. Hopefully we'll get some good bids for that and be another good construction year.
Good deal.
So that is all I have for business for you guys.
Does anyone have anything for Ben? Silence is golden sometimes.
Silence, yes.
No complaints.
No. Well, I guess the only other thing I have today is, I know today is Mike and Todd's last day as county commissioner, and I want to thank you both for your time and working, working with us. I know we had the highway project together, and it was a big project, but it's, it come through successful, and we've got a nice facility, and we've got a lot of, a lot accomplished while you guys were on the board. I just want to thank you for your time and service here and working with me, and wish you guys in the best and what you do next.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben, appreciate her work.
I also want to thank Todd and Mike, it's four years of commitment, and it kind of takes away from the daily life, obviously.